This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So this is the Rules of Government Relations Committee meeting. Thank you for coming. The first order of business is to approve the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 17? August 17. Who to approve the minutes?
Second.
You have a motion to approve the minutes? Any further discussion? Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Kozinski?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. So we have two items on the agenda. One is the charter changes, which we'll go into after because we have a lot of people here. Um, I would like to... I'm gonna call up the resolution to present it, Owen, and then you can speak to it. For start, okay? Let me see if I can find it. There it is. You see that, okay?
Yep, that's the cover letter.
Here we go.
Oh, there we go.
Let me see if I can make it bigger. Is that better? Can you guys read this?
Yep. Yep, that's good.
So why don't you go into it? Well, either resolution, Owen, okay?
Sure, yeah. So the resolution that's in front of you is a piece of a bigger initiative. And the resolution's incomplete, and it's purposely incomplete because it's part of the Xerces Society of Bee City Initiative. So just briefly, this is the culmination of some work that's been going on in the city with discussions around how to better support pollinator populations through native plant initiatives and native plant policy. And over a period probably of one and a half to two years or so of research and looking at opportunities or options for what the city can do, this national program became kind of came to the forefront in terms of encompassing all the framework that we had been having conversations about, which is, one, developing policy within the city to establish native planting policies within the city, to establish policies within the city around pesticide use and production, to identify and delineate use of municipal land for native plantings and to create resident education around native plantings. So the Xerces Society Bee City Program is a program that relies on essentially forming a committee to discuss all of these items, this scope. I included in the packet kind of some more advanced items, which were the native planting list, just to kind of show the council some of the materials that would probably be incorporated to this initiative. So the resolution is part of this, but it's kind of step two or three of all of this. So the reason I brought this to the Rules of Government Relations Committee is not just the resolution, but there is a committee that needs to be formed to approve the resolution initially and present it to the city council, along with an application to the Xerces Society to become a bee city. And then from there, that committee, which I'm recommending would be an ad hoc committee, would then proceed with the scope as listed in the resolution and kind of what I just enumerated there again. Identifying and figuring out how to use municipal land to establish more pollinator habitat, creating policies around native plantings and resident education. The... I'll just delineate what the steps would be for this. And so the first steps are forming a committee. Again, I recommend that this be an ad hoc committee. I think I'd recommend a committee of seven people, including up to two counselors, a member of the planning department, a member of Conservation Commission, a agricultural commission, and then resident stakeholders with some experience or interest in this type of initiative. This would be... This has to be sponsored by a city department, so I've had some background conversations with planning, and I think that they're interested in potentially taking us on as a sponsoring department. And then once the committee is formed and we've designated a sponsoring department, then we're able to complete this resolution. As you see, some of the parks that are not filled out are dependent kind of on these agreements. That is then submitted to the Xerces Society for their approval, and then assuming that they approve of it, we then submit it to the city council to approve the resolution. Once approved, then this committee then does the work and submits that information to the council as recommendations, and it's distributed to the appropriate committee from there. As kind of an extra piece of this, and in conversations with members of the planning department, it sounds like there would be a need in the city for a committee that is specifically dedicated to ecological sustainability going forward. So as part of the initiative or part of the scope of the ad hoc committee, I also recommended that they draw up ordinance language to form a permanent committee, such as the Ecological Sustainability Committee, that we would then again recommend to the city council for longer-term work from there. As you saw in the packet, this has support from the Conservation Commission, the Native Plant Trust, the Massachusetts Pollinayer Network, and Tom Lautzenheiser, who's an ecologist familiar with native plantings, who's involved with both the Pescovig Trust as well as Audubon Society. And then this also kind of dovetails well and works in parallel with some work that's being done in the planning department. I could turn it over to Eli with your permission, Mr. Chairman, in a second. Eli Block, one of our assistant planners. There's some work being done with the Conway School. Kind of currently in a... anticipate could be ongoing, that's a work in collaboration with this broader native plant initiative. So I could stop here because that was a lot to digest, and I could probably answer any questions and maybe have Mr. Block talk if that pleases you, Mr. Chairman.
Is Cassie here?
Cassie cannot make it tonight.
All right, well, I'm glad Eli's here. Eli, why don't you speak to this, and then I'll open it up for questions?
Yeah, so Cassie, the Conservation Agent, as you said, is unable to make it, just wanted to reiterate the Conservation Commission's support, as you saw in the intended packet. My name is Eli Block. I've been a assistant planner here for about 10 months. I'm here to provide support of Counselor Zeris' proposal to make East Hampton an official to establish this ad hoc committee. We believe the consideration of establishing East Hampton as a bee city is in line with other efforts over the past several years. The 2019 Municipal Vulnerability Plan included a goal to support residents in naturalizing their lawns and going to more sustainable drought-resistant options. This was identified as a key action item in that report. The 2021 Open Space Recreation Plan included expanding education and outreach to the general public with benefits of native landscaping as well. The... This fall, we worked with the Conway School. This is our second project with the Conway School this year. This fall, we worked on design for enhancements at Equidale Orchard, the Equidale Orchard property, which includes a community gardens and acres of public land for public access. This project included a initial demonstration native plant garden. And we're currently working with the Conway School again on the Pollinator Actions Plan. We have two members of that student team, and a third member as well, who wasn't able to attend to make on the Pollinator Action Plan that'll help identify areas in the city that are suitable for pollinator habitat, whether it's native plant gardens or changing best management practices for the DBW and Parks Department. Lastly, as you may know, the Planting Department is preparing to launch a climate action plan, which will look at ways the city can reduce its carbon footprint. It's easy to see the ways that these two things would intersect and support one another. So we see these actions and the potential of being a bee city as we support the city council in the next steps to combat climate change, as established in the 2021 Climate Emergency Resolution, and importantly, the Planting Department is also prepared to offer technical support to this committee. Thank you.
Anybody? Before I go to the counselors, I just want to ask if any of you want to speak. Now's the time. Say your name for the record.
Uh, my name's Laura Fisher. I grew up in town. I bring no real scientific knowledge to this discussion, but I have been here pretty much my whole life and have spent a lot of time in the woods, in the fields. I grew up on a farm, and so just very well acquainted with this issue, and I'm heartened that the city is looking at it broadly. Eli mentioned the MVP process, and it's my understanding that that had identified a lot of our infrastructure in terms of roads and systems as priorities. But I also... I'm really drawn to the idea of convening this committee so that we can take inventory and respond to and steward our ecological infrastructure. And I like this resolution. I understand why they went with the name Bee City. I'm in support of this idea. I just want to express that this is about more than bees. There are a lot of other pollinators out there, and everything is intertwined. And so I would suggest, if this ad hoc committee is to go forward, and I would be in support of it, that it take the assessment process and the discovery process, sort of zoom out and focus on, of course, more than just bees. I just want to go on record to say that this is not a novel idea. Some of our neighbors have undergone this type of work. In Franklin County, they conducted a a pollinator working group across five towns. That was a regional effort. And so I would I would express just an urgency that if we are to undertake this effort, that we sort of use some of these programs and processes that have already been implemented locally. I also just want to make sure that the process looks beyond our municipal boundaries and sets us up for the type of regional pollinator corridors that exist regardless of where our municipality ends and another begins. And finally, I would just like to say that I'm very glad that Mass Audubon and PCT are looped in on this and in support of it, because to me, those are two of the largest stakeholders in town. That being said, I'm happy to stay involved, and I'm very encouraged that this may be moving forward. And so I'd love to be a part of it. I'm in support of it, and I'm happy to lend whatever expertise I can. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Go ahead, sir. Say your name.
Uh, my name is Sean Havitt. So we're all in the midst of a biodiversity crisis. This is one of the most several major crises we are dealing with now that also include global pandemic and climate change. As these crises intersect and magnify each other, their effects on human beings, on us, grows larger and harder to ignore. And we feel helpless. Most of these problems seem beyond us as individuals. I can speak from personal experience, and the biodiversity crisis is something that we can address personally and as a community, and that we can... And that in our communities, and best of all, we can verify the success that we have with our own eyes. The biodiversity crisis is caused in great part by massive loss of habitat for most living things. We human beings have expanded so much and taken so much space for ourselves that we have taken away the homes and the food of most other creatures. Some of these creatures have gotten a lot of bliss, be like monarch butterflies. But there are millions of other species that pass into the end of the night unseen. We just don't notice the loss of that showy plants and animals that we have crowded out that are disappearing. The World Wildlife Foundation estimates that there's been a 60% decline in animal population since 1970. The losses of plants and insects are even more severe, and we can't even count them. We want to bring back the birds and butterflies and bees, but where do we start? Darn these species individually is inefficient and time-consuming. Our... We no longer have that sort of time. Our entire biosystem is collapsing in front of our eyes. It is not unbringable, perhaps. It is. We are living through the collapse. We start by inviting insects back into our spaces, and we do this by planting plants that evolved here with the insects, native plants. We plant pollinator roots. We plant native trees like oaks and redwoods. We plant native shrubs like blueberries and native flowers like goldenfly. And we quit using pesticides. Where the insects come, the birds and the other animal will be able to come too. Let me join my line of others, Brooks. Over the course of my life, my mother has taken barren landscapes and turned them into veritable wildlife areas. By circumstance, the mother moves often compared to most of the sisters, and she's managed to massively increase the diversity of every crop that she's planted, large and small. This is a miracle seed with your own eyes. You visit the first time, it's a few sparrows, a few grasshoppers, and a sea of long grass. You visit the next time, and the flowers are beginning to bloom, and you start to see new birds. A couple of years in, you visit the spot decorated by an enormous wave of life: plants, birds, mammals, wizards, and pigeons. What this has shown is that we can each have a little wildlife reserve in our own space. We don't even have to know specifically what we're preserving. If we grow it, they will come. We simply need to plant native plants and avoid using chemicals, and then sit back and enjoy all the life that blossoms and buzzes. I'm here to advocate that East Hampton become a bee city. What does all this have to do with being a city? Bees are pollinators, direct men. People understand that pollinators are beneficial to us even when they don't understand just exactly how critical pollinators are. Bees are symbols of all the other life that we can support, that we can sustain, that we can enjoy. The life that ultimately sustains us. I'm gonna skip ahead a little bit because I probably thought too long, but the Bee City Program helps to guide us as we make the impulse that starts making our city a haven that sustains life. It ensures that we create sustained habitat that can be used by pollinators. By creating habitat for pollinators, we'd be creating habitat for all the animals that feed on the pollinators, like birds as well as many other forms of life. The Bee City Program discourages the use of pesticides in the city. Thing about pesticides, they also kill a lot more than the meths do. They kill both pest insects and the predatory insects that actually keep those pests under control. But the pests reproduce very quickly, and the predators reproduce slowly. So once we kill the predators with pesticides, the pests go crazy, and we get sucked in more and more insecticides. This is a terrible cycle, and it's why the use of pesticides is a major contributor to the current biodiversity crisis. Some of our pesticides have gotten too powerful too, so powerful that they kill any insect that eats any part of the plant, from the roots to the nectar involved. These pesticides are used to treat pests before they purchase, and they end up killing for years. The Bee City Program helps us plan, and we all want to help. The Bee City requirements just give us the impetus to stop procrastinating, stop waiting for somebody else to move, and take action now. And that is action for things that I promise you will see personally and soon. The Bee City Program helps us to see. Your recognition asks for annual awareness events. Those events are an opportunity for us to take the time to look at what we've accomplished and what our outside's for ignoring. The Bee City Program advertises what we're doing. But some folks may not like it, but there are a lot of forces in the world that want us to ignore these problems. They will spend money, time, and effort to try and prevent us from understanding the roots of the problem and getting to see how easy and joyful the solution is. Because of this, it is best if we evangelize about the solutions. Bee City requires us to highly defend. We have taken out this mantle. Perhaps it will inspire some people to sing the praises of what they have seen in that day. So, long story short, I support East Hampton becoming a bee city. Sorry for the long thing, but I care a lot, so.
Well said.
Anybody else, if you could be brief, that would be helpful.
I'll be really brief. I'm Mary Harrison, and he's a really hard ass fellow. I just, you know, we're half small hobby farmers, and we have the and so we've shared support of it. Everything we said, I'm responsible.
This isn't historical, is it?
No, I'm sorry. Make me downstairs.
All right, thanks.
Go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to that we all have been supportive of it.
Anybody else? Go ahead, sir.
Ma'am.
Ma'am, I can't tell what you're hat and your face are, I'm sorry.
I'm Bexum Ruskey. She/her pronouns. I live at Fort Carroll Ave, and since 2003. And when I bought the property, it was a third of an acre of just grass. And I've been involved with the Native Plant Trust in their horticulture certification program, and also did the master gardener program in Rhode Island, and have converted our backyard into basically just a native plant habitat. And we basically do our gardening for the birds and the bees and all the pollinators in between and beyond. So I think it's just amazing to link ourselves in with something that is also nationally known and internationally known. I think it's a really great opportunity, and I've been basically waiting for this opportunity to happen, to get involved in for over a decade, so I'm thrilled to support this.
Last call. Okay, I have a couple of thoughts. First of all, I don't know a lot about this subject from a scientific point of view. I know about government processes, but I do know this. If the Conservation Commission and the Planning Department are behind this, I'm behind it. I trust these departments. They know what they're doing. These are volunteers in the Conservation Commission that know what they're doing. I do know about government process. I've been around. I know more about it than most people. And I think one of the things you touched on, Owen, was getting to a committee that would be a permanent committee for sustainability, et cetera. My thought is that an ad hoc committee, the idea of an ad hoc committee is good, but I'd rather it not be council-based. Now, I'm gonna use the example of the CPA committee. It was formed by ordinance. And because it was formed by ordinance, we could designate who had to be on it and who appointed who. The mayor appoints people, a lot of the the different committees, Planning Department, Conservation Commission, Park Department, they they are represented. If we have an ordinance that establishes this committee and puts on it just like you want it as an ad hoc committee, a council member, et cetera, et cetera, that the president could appoint, who wants to volunteer to be on it, and all of the other people, a seven-member committee, if we establish that by ordinance, you do two things. You get your committee that meets constantly, reports to the council when it's ready for legislative action. That's something I like. And also is permanent. Will have that sustainability for the future. And recommend legislative action and ordinance to do anything that is in your resolution. So I strongly recommend that we look at an ordinance that establishes this committee you're looking for, right from the get-go. And that committee is independent of the council. It advises the council, just like the CPA committee appropriates funds. It's a model that can work. Now, I was thinking, I like the EDIC, for instance. That's an administrative code-developed committee that gives advice on economic matters. We got the vacancy ordinance from them. But that isn't appointed. They're volunteers. There's no criteria for appointment. Whereas an ordinance would allow you to get the kind of committee you want, whether it's a planning department member, maybe a planning board member, maybe a conservation commission member, maybe the conservation agent has to be on it. That's a debate. We could recommend that in ordinance. Any committee can recommend ordinances. It doesn't have to be the ordinance committee, but we could recommend an ordinance, and I think that's the way we should go. That's my opinion. And I'd like to hear what the president and the other counselors think, because that skips the council getting involved in something. It needs to have... The council needs to be the second step, not the first step. That's all I'm saying. And I want to know what everybody else thinks. Omar?
I'll go first.
Who, Connie? Connie, or JP? What do you think of that? Go ahead, JP.
Thank you, Counselor Riss. I have to commend everyone who's worked so hard to bring this to fruition, to this far thus far. It's an important subject, one that I think the average person in the city probably knows little about. So I think certainly education is an important process for everybody. In the process of setting up and moving forward from here, I am considering what Counselor Riss had said about establishing an ordinance, and although I think structurally it makes sense, I don't want to see a moment pass where we're not moving forward, dealing with this subject. To go to ordinance can take time. Setting up an ad hoc committee can be pretty quick. I think some of the basics can be done, and I think if we put some forethought into the matter, the selection process can move rather rapidly, and if we already put on the various groups, whether they be the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, et cetera. The Parks Department, I think, would be important to include in this matter, as well as members of the Agriculture Commission. I think all of this works, but I don't want to see it get delayed or into another process. I think while we're doing the ad hoc committee, we can begin to form another group. We can think about that. And I think that would be helpful, because I think Counselor Riss is right. I think structurally, this is important. In my mind, I was wondering whether or not we're leaving the mayor's office out of this or the mayor as far as an appointment or two, just giving that some additional thought. But I'm not sure we need that for a council committee, but we might offer that to the mayor, just to get some additional buy-in if folks think that might be what we should pursue. But I'm all for moving this forward as much as possible.
Well, let me answer that question. As I said, the charter doesn't require an ordinance to go to ordinance committee. If we come up with an ordinance right now in this committee, it goes right to the council for vote. There's no delay. It doesn't go to the ordinance committee, and once again, unless the council wants to take a step that's not necessary. We can develop the ordinance now, and that would include having a person from the mayor's office appointed. So your worry about delay isn't necessary. We can do it. We could develop the ordinance, and I would suggest Counselor Zeris, you look at the CPA ordinance and develop language like that. We could pass that at our next meeting. It goes right to the council, and it can be established. And it skips the step of the ad hoc committee, forming another committee. So my feeling is, let's do this right away. Let's get it permanent. And then they can always come back to the council at any time to advise the council. This is what we're thinking. We need legislation. We need help in any way. But I just wanted to let you know that I don't think there's a second step of this having to go to ordinance committee, JP. We're allowed to present an ordinance. The charter allows that, and the ordinance committee wouldn't mind either. So before I go to you, I want to hear from Omar and Connie, and then I'll go back to you, okay, JP?
Sure.
Connie, what do you think?
Yeah, sir, I'm trying to...
She likes to do her minutes at a time.
First, totally supportive of this. I think it's incredibly important. You know, I've been doing this for a year, but I don't have as extensive experience, and so if we can make this permanent quickly, I think that would be great. I think you know, when I think about this, I think there's a whole lot of things that we need to be focusing on within the city to think about these things, and not just wildlife plants that are, but how we work with Eversource and pipes in the ground and gas and, you know, all of those things that have a massive impact on plants and wildlife, and trees in particular. And so I think that there's a whole lot of things that we need to be thinking about. And I think that we've possibly been thinking very narrow and in silos, and I think that we need to be thinking more broadly. And I think that this committee allows us an opportunity to bring up a variety of different city institutions, committees, departments together to actually talk about this and think strategically about the future and not just piecemeal, et cetera. And so I think there has to be a strong commitment from city council, the mayor, et cetera, to be able to kind of address our future and in regards to Laura's comment about thinking regionally, I think that's should be a huge part of this and not just, this is what East Hampton is doing, because we're impacted by everything that's all around us, and so I would hope that that committee would have a a mission within it to focus on kind of a regional kind of collaboration that I think needs to be
I think, just before I go to Omar, an ordinance in its direction could be broad. Sustainability, whatever the whatever the committee's assignments are. Doesn't have to be just Bee City. Could be everything. And that committee can deal with the bee issue first or pollinators first, but everything. So I like that. I like that better than having two steps. Omar, and then I'll go back to JP.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with you in everything when you set up the the ad hoc committee and create a permanent committee. First, I want to say I'm 100% supporting these efforts and what we're gonna do. I agree that this committee has the ability and the power to create ordinances as soon as possible and create that permanent committee that avoids to have two committees.
that avoid to have two committees. And I will encourage Counselor Zaret and Counselor Rist to do as soon as possible. That way we can avoid that delay. But if if the council, if this committee wanna create an ad hoc committee, I can appoint people right away. That's super easy. But my encouragement is to create a permanent one, I think that will do a better job for our city.
Wait, let me get to JP, then I'll get to you all. Go ahead JP. Did you wanna say something else?
I think we could go either way, I just would hate to see us move in and set up an ordinance and not have it be well thought through, this seems kind of very quick in terms of having, oh, let's do an ordinance and we do it the next meeting. And there we are. I, my sense is, I agree with Counselor Denham that this really needs to be done strategically, and I think it needs to be well thought out. And that takes time, so I would be counsel that we take that time, but move forward quickly with the B.E.C.D. resolution and the city and ad hoc committee. That would be my preference.
Omar?
Yeah, so, I mean, first of all, obviously, I appreciate the input of my peers, and that's how we get the best work done, and obviously, the wisdom and experience of the of the chair.
An old guy.
Yeah, so, I mean, just to explain some of my rationale behind an ad hoc versus, you know, a permanent ordinance-based committee at first, it has just to do with being expeditious. Now, that being said, if you feel that we could be expeditious with an ordinance, I think we can probably get together and I don't think the language for this would be too complicated at all. But I'm happy to work with you on that, and I think then the scope the scope would be a little different, though I outlined in the recommendation for the ad hoc committee, in the sense that we would just make the B.E.C.D. first agenda, and it would include all of those items that were listed. And so I don't have an issue with that, as long as we can just get moving, you know, with the spring coming up, there are some items that are intended to be covered by some of the scope here, and I think it would be important to try to to try to get something done by that, that's not to say that it can't be done in informal manner, but it'd be better if we can have that covered with more of a formal committee. The work that's being done with this current Conway School project, you know, again, works very nicely in parallel with or in conjunction with this committee, so I don't however it gets done, I don't care, as long as we can potentially get it done quickly, and I don't think, and this isn't controversial. There seems to be a lot of buzz about it. I had to. And so, yeah, I mean, I think by your next, do you anticipate we'll meet soon?
Because I think we- I would like to do that. My thought on it is also, we're skipping the step of two committees, and that's what I like. I understand Counselor Kozinski's concerns about making sure it's well thought out, but there's models, and I use the CPA ordinance as a model that really works. And it doesn't rely on one person to appoint a committee. Its committee is designated by ordinance, the president may appoint one councillor or two, the mayor has to appoint somebody, and there has to be a member of the Planning Department, there has to be a member, the Conservation Agent has to be on it. That is a law, because it's an ordinance. I like that. And I don't see why we can't develop that. And Counselor Kozinski, ordinances can be amended, if we see a problem with it after we develop it. But we have a lot of smart people on our council, that we've all done ordinances. And the CPA committee, CPA ordinance works very well. So maybe I can work with you, maybe you can look at that ordinance, and what you need to help me with is the scope of this new committee. It's a permanent committee, dealing with sustainability, dealing with everything, native pollination, all of the things that are part of it. And then the committee can decide its agenda and its priorities. What should we deal with first? Bees? Or pollinators, I guess there's more than just bees, I heard that, that's correct. I have an interesting thing to tell you all, this is incredibly supernatural to me, but I'll tell you why in a minute. But that's where I'm at. I guess I have to ask the committee, is it okay if we develop this ordinance, and if you can convince us JP that you'd rather see an ad hoc committee, okay, but I'd like to move forward with the rules, Government Relations Committee charging Counselor Zaret with developing this ordinance. And then we'll see where it goes, that's where I am. Counselor Denham, what do you think?
Is that a, is that a, are you?
Just a question.
Was that a, are you putting forth a motion right now?
I guess I could, I'm moved that we develop an ordinance that establishes the, what are you even gonna call it, Sustainability and?
I think Ethological Sustainability Committee or something like that.
There you go, whatever he said. I make a motion that we look into that. Connie?
Second.
Motion on the floor, discussion. JP?
Let me just say, I'm not opposed to motion or moving forward. I just wanna be sure that we have covered all our got it all, our eyes and crossed our teeth and processed in terms of broadening scope of the rule. So, that being said, I endorse this.
Okay, then we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, sorry Connie.
I just wanna, you changed a little bit, so I just wanna, is it to establish, or is it to explore the establishment of? I want, because you said two different things.
I think we need to explore the establishment of an ordinance. That's the motion on the floor now, because we don't have an ordinance in front of us to recommend. So we're just exploring that now, we're charging Counselor Zaret and myself and to get something done here. Okay, so it's explore, that's the language.
Okay.
So-
I second that again.
All in favor? Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Kozinski?
Aye.
Counselor Rist says aye. So I gotta tell you this, because it's shocking to me. I'm a designer, I do theater work. We're doing a play called Native Gardens down at the Majestic Theater. And it deals with one, it has everything in it, it has ethnic stripe, it has ageism, it has racism, it has everything, but one of the biggest things is there's this beautiful garden on one side of the stage, and there's this new family, this Hispanic family that moved in, and they wanna do native gardens because they pollinate there. And here we are, three days after we opened that show, talking about it. So, I'm a little, I'm a little praised right now. But you should see the show. Anyway, it's incredible, you don't have to put that-
Praise now, or?
I'm shocked that we're talking about native gardens in a council meeting, and I just opened the show about it, so. All right, anyway, Counselor Zaret, before we conclude?
Yes, sir, I just had a quick question on procedure. So, is this type of language I can submit directly back now to this committee?
Yes, yes, yes.
And I'll have a few questions to you then about kind of appointment powers. One of my biggest concerns, I'll just say, was to establish an ordinance committee that relies entirely on mayoral appointments, we have to go through that whole process, and that can take time. But are you saying that a committee can also have appointments directly from, say, the city council and?
Yeah, the CPA committee has two mayoral appointments, the finance chairman has to be on the committee, that's a councillor. It has a member of all of the committees around us, the Planning Board, et cetera. Read the ordinance and you'll see how that's set up. But the biggest thing is what Counselor Kozinski said is the scope. You need to start that, and you've already written a lot of the language.
I could have played it, you know, like two days.
Yeah. I'm trying to find, let me get to my calendar. Because we have all three members here. There's a Finance Committee meeting on the, let's see, we have Council 17. Finance on the 25th. How much time do you need, Owen, what do you think?
To write this language?
26th?
Forty-eight hours? I can send it to you, we can-
I can go back at 4:00.
Yeah.
How about the 26th? I don't wanna ever do back-to-back meetings, because that's screw me tonight. 26th, are you in town, Connie, for that?
Yes.
JP, you okay with the 26th for our next meeting?
That's great.
Okay, so, are you okay Omar?
What time?
I'd like to do 5:30, if that's okay. And you're all welcome, of course, but we're gonna talk about the language, and then we'll vote on the ordinance or not.
5:30?
5:30 on the 26th. Okay? Thank you all.
Well, thank you. Omar? I'll send you some-
Yeah, I'll probably get it at 2:00 AM this morning.
Probably. You know me.
You need a iPhone.
All right, thanks.
Now, I would like to talk a little bit about the charter to my fellow councillors.
Back, back, was it? B.E.C.K.?
B.E.X.
B.E.X. And your last name?
Yeah.
Zemreski.
Z.E.M.
G.U.N.
B.R.U.
R.U.
S.K.I.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
How good is it, Omar?
Nice.
So what I wanna do here, everybody, is introduce the charter changes that I'm recommending. Tell you that I need your advice.
Thank you, lady.
I've done, I've been a chair of the Charter Review Committee many times. So the first one, let me tell you where I started. We had a vacancy. We have a four-year term of the mayor. And if there ever was a vacancy, how would we deal with it, because the charter currently deals with a two-year term. I started out by just changing a couple of that's what, I'm sharing this now. Let's see if I can make it larger, how do I do that? Oh, not bad. No, I guess I can't. Wait a minute. Can you all read this? I started out with this, this was my original idea, but that did not work when Barbara sent me Northampton's charter, which told us about the vacancy. So, the first thing. That's too easy. Thank God I have a tech giant here, anyway. Let me start over. The first thing I have here, JP, you might remember, we talked about this. We have to make the compensation for the mayor in its incremental forms more permanent in the charter. So that's what this language does, three and one. Okay? I'm presenting this tonight, I'm not asking you to provide editorial ideas. I sent you this JP, and Connie. If you think of something that doesn't work in this language, please bring it back, I am not dictating anything here. I say the staggered amounts, maybe the word incremental should be in there, et cetera. But this was to permify what the city attorney allowed us to do last term, was to incrementally increase the salary of the mayor. So that's the one. Now, let's talk about the vacancy of the mayor in the office of the mayor. When this occurred, I asked the city attorney to tell us what happens given that we have a two-year term if there's suddenly a vacancy in the mayor's office. And I wanted to know, for instance, does the president of the council, who by the charter right now gets to be the mayor, does that mean that the president has to resign his position for the three months until we have a special election or whatever? And the city attorney said, no. That led me to Northampton's charter, and I can tell you that even our own charter was developed from Agawam's charter. That we often use other charters, as we did in the Charter Review Committee, to get some ideas. So in this document, the bold is my language. The non-bold is probably Northampton's language, and I sent you Northampton's language, okay? So as you look at these, there's a lot of different, they thought of everything that might happen in four years, JP and Connie. B, I highlighted this because this is important to me because this establishes the council president's service as interim mayor. Does not have to, and especially here, does not have to resign their position as a councillor during the 120 days. I also made it 120 and not 90, and that's debatable. I did that so there was enough time for the clerk to set up an election. And then I set up some language so the president could vote only in this ties or something. But I remember that before Northampton changed its charter, the mayor was on the council in Northampton, so it's not unusual to have the mayor, the temporary mayor, be on the council. The special election here, this language is pretty much similar to Northampton in that, but I made it 120 days. And we need to remember Article 7 of the charter establishes rate-choice voting for the mayor. So that would still be in place. In other words, let's say the president of the council wants to run for mayor. We can do that. If they lose, they're still on the council. In the special election mode, okay?
Got some questions about that, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So let's say hypothetically the mayor steps down in January.
Of what year?
Let's say hypothetically this year, it could be any year.
So she's already been on the-
Second year.
So in the second year, so in the-
So in the second year, okay.
So in the second year, within 120 days, there has to be a special election?
Yes.
Or would they not just carry out until the next election?
The original charter in this language wants to do mayor elected, that's too long. Because the only other thing you could do is make the president of the council the permanent mayor for two and a half years, or three years. And that doesn't seem fair to the community, they didn't elect the president of the council as mayor.
No, I'm saying, sorry, I meant to the next city election. If it was in the second year, I'm just thinking about cost to the city, like, if we're just talking about a period of time.
I see what you're saying, and I think I addressed that.
Because I think I saw something about that, but then I was like, well, why wouldn't we just?
Here's the language here, I'm going over it, notwithstanding subsection being no special election shall be ordered if the vacancy occurs in the last seven months prior to either the midterm or the mayoral or the city election. Let's just say mayor's elected in the first year, they decide to resign, whoever that mayor is.
Yeah.
There's still eight, 14 months
Right.
until the next city election. That's why I put seven months here. Is that too long? That means the city council president is mayor for seven months. I'm bringing all this up for everybody to think about it, okay, because I'm not sure is seven months too long for there to be an interim mayor? But it does provide, as you say, a way of not having an election in July and then having another election in November.
Right, because I'm just thinking in yeah, I mean, I guess seven months is fine to me, I just feel like-
Well, that would be May, let's say if the-
I wouldn't even say January, whatever, like-
Well, that's a year. We could debate it, it is, well, it's nine months.
Nine months.
I said May because other charters did that, I'd have to look at Northampton's charter, a lot of it is based on their thinking. But we have to have some language in there if there was a vacancy in the first year of a four-year term. As again, I'm just looking at it. Here, in this language, in the last seven months, this is based on the Northampton charter, the president of the council shall have to resign if they're interim mayor for seven months. That's what this language says, and there shall be exist a vacancy in the council seat of the city council. Unless such vacancy shall occur in the last two months prior to a city election. In other words, if it happened in September, then you'd be president and be mayor for two months. So that's language that I pulled from them, it also establishes that if you're gonna be mayor for seven months, you probably should resign from the council. Again, I'll say it again. These are my ideas and Northampton's ideas, I'm not- Again, I'll say it again, these are my ideas and North Hampton's ideas, I'm not fixed on them, but we need to do something. And I expect this will take us a few meetings to come up with our conclusions on this. Then it has to go to the mayor, it has to go to the city attorney. But we ought to really do it before the next mayor's election, because we have to establish something. Here, month forty-seven or forty-eight, there's no special election because that's two months before regular election.
Yeah, I just.
And if you're the mayor for seven months, the city council president, or even longer, they shall receive the compensation because they have all the same duties. I'm just presenting this as a first look.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open, I think whatever we decide, I just want to make sure that there's not excessive cost to the city. And what, for us, I hope we can have a conversation about it, is what is reasonable? What is a reasonable amount of time? And so.
Well, that's the seven-month thing. I put seven months, and I said, I don't know, it should have been three.
Right, that's what I'm saying, like, I just want us to figure out what is the reasonable.
Have to go back to the original charter, it was the first year. But we have to have vacancy provisions. Fortunately, we have a biannual election, so that helps us.
Right.
The other thing, well, again, the amount of months is the key, okay? And the other thing is to think about this, if the city council president has to resign from the council to become mayor, there's language in here that says the council can decide if that, if the president of council says, I really don't want to be mayor for seven months, I want to stay on the council. Someone else could, on the council, could be designated by the council to be mayor. That's in here.
The way this is written, someone else on the council would have to.
Yeah. And again, that's North Hampton's ideas, JP.
It's not a question of someone else might want it.
Well, I would hold out of nine members, somebody would be willing to do it, but I don't know what to say. But the point of that is that the council president can't be forced to resign their position. Again, North Hampton thought a lot about this because they just changed the four-year term as well. Now, you could look at other cities and towns, but I didn't want to get deep into other cities and towns. Cities, I mean, that have four-year terms. We could look at Hollyoaks, but this one was fairly thorough, so I started with North Hampton.
Just a point of information, if we're saying that we really don't want to have, or it would be beneficial not to have someone serve as interim mayor for more than seven months, then that person would be. Let's say someone served for seven months. I'm sorry, the point I'm trying to make is that if you're trying to avoid an election for mayor, you may create an election for a counselor, and you don't want to do that here.
Well, we have a biannual election for counselor, so we're gonna take advantage of that. In other words, councils are only two-year terms. So we have that election every other November. So this seven months is seven months prior to the biannual election, or seven months prior to the mayor's election. And as Connie said, why don't we make it nine months? I mean, I'm open to discussing.
We revert to having the council appoint a council member by vote, as we did in the election where we had a resignation.
That's in here, that would happen if the council president or another counselor was named interim mayor, then we'd have to have that.
Well, we'd have to have the process of if somebody else filled the position, if they're the next in line. But if there was no one else in line.
Exactly, exactly.
Revert to the council elected. And that would solve the problem of, well, we're gonna create an election anyway.
I mean, I'm okay with nine months, it just seemed like a long time. Because, remember, the people didn't vote the council president as mayor, but interim mayor, nine months, that's not so long. I don't know, we could decide, you know?
Right, but my thinking is that person is also, has been elected.
Good point.
So, and depending on whether they're, I guess, how they're, I mean.
Well, it could be precinct or at large.
Or at large, doesn't matter, because they were still elected, right?
If they were elected by their peers to be president, that's enough for me to designate that they would be certain capable.
Right, like, I have faith, like, nine people are saying that we have faith in this person to lead us. And they're also saying that in case of an emergency, we are putting faith in this person to ascend to the mayor. If something happens, then that also to me is, and they were elected by their community, then for me, that's enough to be able to say.
The other thing against nine months is that the office of mayor is challenging. It's extremely stressful and difficult.
Sure.
Depends, that's why there's language in here, that maybe the council president doesn't want the job in a seven months. I think a hundred and twenty days or ninety days, whatever we decide, is not a problem. But if it's, if you're resigning your position on the council, that's what you really wanted to do, and now you're gonna be the mayor. Omar does a lot of hard work, but I don't think he compares to what the mayor has to deal with. Day by day, permanent position, full-time, so.
I think it has to do with whether or not somebody has other responsibilities, which.
There you go, that's a great point. I mean, you have a full-time job, all of a sudden I have a full-time job as mayor, that may line us, leave us to, maybe it shouldn't be seven months. Yes, Omar?
But I think the language is kind of clear to the city council president to say, no.
Because I have a job, I have a.
I have a job, and let's vote for someone else on the council.
Because there's language in the charter that says you cannot have another job if you're mayor.
Except that that language is waived.
Did I do that?
It's part of the charter, yeah.
Did I do that? It's waived for the hundred and twenty-day period or is it waived for the seven-month period?
I believe it's waived, waived at least for the hundred and twenty-day period.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty days will be okay, I don't.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, I think the permanent seven-month position, I think it would be there. Unless we want to put it in the charter, but I think that does a disservice. The reason we want the mayor not to have another job is so they pay attention to their job here as mayor. It's already gonna be hard for that, which made me think ninety days might be better, which was the original charter, ninety days, for the temporary, until the special election.
Sure.
Because we're not asking that person to give up their day job. They come in, they sign purchase orders, they do their work.
Yeah, like I said, I was just, I know that, my understanding is elections cost a great deal of money, and so that's.
That's why I went to seven months, because Barbara convinced me if there's any way we can avoid a special election. I said, well, we can't, there's certain.
I believe the amount is somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars at last check.
Actually, it was, it's probably ten, I think it's ten, but, okay. Well, I put this forward, please do a little homework on it, study North Hampton's charter if you want to go to the others. I need your advice. I spent a lot of time on, it's based on my experience. But it does, Jesus, it's not permanent. Okay?
Since we're examining this area for a new charter change, could you just go to the bottom here of the proposed charter, close to the bottom, maybe up a little bit? There's a section that says, under what conditions? It says.
Can you give, C?
Special election parameters. It had to do with why the mayor, oh, I'm sorry, it's at the very beginning of everything, I had a thought.
Death, resignation, removal of office, incapacity otherwise?
I'm wondering about incapacity, just to break the subject up, because we don't have anything in our charter to deal with incapacity.
That's trained from North Hampton?
If they may be incapacitated, if somebody were to be ill and not be able to make a decision for themselves, if they had to, not to bid a stroke, something like that. What then happens technically and legally? It shouldn't lend them.
I think the word incapacity, this is North Hampton's charter language, it's not mine. Maybe that's too much because we have other areas in the charter where if the mayor got, not to forbid if the mayor was ill.
Area of mental health.
Right, well.
And look at that, if there were a serious mental health problem, if there were a stroke. There are issues that wasn't dealt with the US Constitution originally, but eventually they got around to it a few hundred years later. And I think it's worth just throwing out on the table for folks to think about that area.
Well, incapacity would have to be something where, in that vein, you're might be right, in my mind. God forbid a mayor has a stroke and the health professionals say, this is gonna take a couple of years to recover from. Someone has, someone has to say, well, I can't do the job anymore.
Well, let's say they can't.
Yeah, but somebody has to say that, and who says that, the medical professional? I don't know.
Their proxy?
That would have to be, I think that has to be, we put incapacity in, but then when that's developed later, if that ever happens, state law, medical law, whatever comes into play, would have to inform the council that incapacity exists. You know what I mean, JP? Because I think the word, lots of things.
Because I would hate to find us for any city in that situation.
I don't think I want to write language as what incapacity is into this charter. I think incapacity is enough.
Would be my, would be my suggestion.
Well, okay.
We can decide not to do anything with it at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think we're, we're, we're.
This is exactly why I wanted to introduce this, okay? Everybody's getting tired. Omar's moving his eye, so I'd like to conclude the meeting, if that's all right with you members?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion to adjourn, Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Kozinski?
Aye.
Counselor Wiss says aye. Thank you all.